...see every day.
We have a robot bartender. His name is Guillermo del Porro. He was completely custom-built for the single, sole purpose of getting people drunk. And he makes a mean motor oil martini.
Mayor Eric Garcetti and Bill Nye, the Science Guy, also came out to check out the fun.
This will be the new arcade, a place where you don't just sit at a machine by yourself, but you interact and do things together, where we can take the future and not be scared of it, but we can actually tame it and steer it to the things that we want to be, the things that we want to do.
What is this here if not the useful arts? Of entertaining ourselves? So people have taken STEM and they've made it into STEAM: science, technology, engineering, art, and math.
Wow.
And for me, one of the coolest things was soaring and flying above the city through this virtual reality simulator.
So being on this makes you feel you're a bird, basically. Oh, I just crashed.
We love technology, and so we've applied a lot of the latest tech that we can find from different kinds of cameras and virtual reality to cheap sensors and have built our sort of modern take on the circus.
Two-Bit Circus is a permanent fixture in downtown Los Angeles, but the neat thing is they have the ability to change up the games.
We've built this as the movie theater for interactive, so we're constantly able to change the content, keep it fresh, you know, both with the stuff that we're making as well as things that partners are making. So we've made this as a showcase for different kinds of game makers, from touchscreen games to console games, even board games and card games.
So step right up and try your hand at some of these exciting games, a modern circus right here in our backyard.
That's gonna do it for this best-of edition. I'm Umeema Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
MyLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app, available from the App Store or on Google Play. MyLA311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even senior citizen center. Request graffiti removal. You can even pay your DWP bill. Keep up with what's going on at City Hall. And even report illegal dumping.
Items called special or general public comment?
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. Chair calling for item number forty to be forthwith.
So ordered. Mr. Bannon, are you ready for your presentation? Mr. Harris Dawson, on item forty, there's a card on that item, so we're gonna hold it, take the card, we'll vote, and if it passes, then we will send it forthwith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Today I have a presentation for an amazing organization in my district that is doing something both amazing and timely. I'm here today with a much-loved community organization in Westchester, the Airport Marina Counseling Service, and to celebrate their partnership with Antioch University. And as many of us are dealing with pushback against permanent supportive housing or bridge housing in our districts, I want to talk just very quickly about a story about the history of the Airport Marina Counseling Service. It is now one of the most beloved organizations and institutions in Westchester. And when it was founded and proposed in the early 1960s, people freaked out beyond measure that this organization was coming into the community. "To treat the crazies," they said. And Bud, Marielle, and Casman worked very, very hard with the community to make sure this organization came in to provide affordable, low-cost, mental health services to people who needed it. And this organization has won the community over and is one of the most distinguished and important community organizations that we have in my district. And today, we are celebrating the fact that they have a new partnership with Antioch University to do special psychotherapy services to lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community. And today's an important day to do it because, as Mr. O'Farrell and I will talk about in our journey motions today, today's the fortieth anniversary of the assassination of Supervisor Harvey Milk in San Francisco. We have come a very long way since then, but there is still a need for specialized services for the LGBTQIA community. We just saw last week the horrible predicament that people are transgender sisters and brothers face and the struggles they go through. Suicide rates are still significantly higher and mental health issues higher for people who are LGBT and for people who are questioning their sexual identity. So before I go any further, to announce this partnership, there has been a video produced, and I'd like to play that now.
The mission of Airport Marina Counseling Service, or AMCS as we like to call it, is twofold. It's to provide affordable, community-based mental health services and to train mental health therapists. The clinic has been around for over fifty years.
So Antioch University of Los Angeles founded the LGBT specialization in 2006, and so we train on an academic side, people who are going to become marriage and family therapists or licensed clinical professional counselors, on how to work with the LGBTQIA community.
LGBT clients come in with anxiety and depression and relationship issues, just like any other client might, right? And I think what is important to understand is that therapists need to be aware and conscious of the unique experience that LGBT individuals have with their own life experience, growing up, and their families of origin, religion, education, all those things in which heterosexism, homophobia, and other kinds of oppressions have affected the development of the sense of self as an LGBTQ person.
We are often hearing ideas and we're approached for services that are needed, and we do what we can to meet those needs. And so really, Antioch approached us. We were seeing that there was a need in the community, as there's only two other clinics that offer low-fee services specializing in this area.
It's also extremely significant that Airport Marina Counseling Services is providing services specialized for the LGBTQ community here in Westchester. Historically, in Los Angeles, everything LGBTQ has been in West Hollywood. And the reality is that we live everywhere in Los Angeles, and having services around the county is really valuable.
AMCS's commitment to the LGBT community will change lives for the better.
It's literally going to save lives.
For more information, please visit our website or call the number below.
Thank you.
So colleagues, this new program that Airport Marina Counseling Services is launching with Antioch is a result of a ten-year partnership that ACMS has had with Antioch. They began partnering a decade ago to launch one of the nation's first graduate psychology specializations devoted to affirmative psychology for the LGBTQIA community. Antioch is helping to provide student trainees to make sure its paperwork, intake methodology, and public spaces are all affirmative, focusing on client comfort and working towards authenticity and self-acceptance. This partnership not only makes sure that counselors are available as a low-cost service at ACMS, but it's also helping train the next generation of counselors to be aware and sensitive to the unique challenges facing the LGBTQIA community. So before I ask some of the folks to say a few words, I want to present the certificate to ACMS. And I'd like to ask Dr. Eden Garcia-Balas from ACMS and Thomas Mandragon from Antioch to say a few words.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mike for recognizing the importance of the LGBT Affirmative Therapy Center, and also thank the AMCS staff that is here, as well as board members and staff from Antioch University. Airport Marina Counseling Service was founded in 1961, and we provide comprehensive mental health services to low-income families. The mission of AMCS is twofold. It's to provide affordable, community-based mental health services and to train mental health therapists. And we were thrilled when Antioch approached us to launch the LGBT Affirmative Therapy Center because it's another service that we now provide the community. I'd like to share a couple of statistics with you. LGBT Americans suffer from mental health disorders at a far exceeding rate than heterosexual people. And gay men, depression strikes gay men at six times the rate of straight men. So these statistics are alarming, and I'm glad that we're doing something about it. The LGBT Affirmative Therapy Center is an invaluable resource for many, and we are thrilled that we continue to partner with Antioch University, who is not only training the therapists in the center, but also all of the staff and all of the therapists at the clinic, making the clinic more affirmative. So with that, I'd like to introduce Thomas Mandragon from Antioch University.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Mike, for your invaluable interest in the psychological and mental welfare of LGBTQ individuals, and as seen in your support with Airport Marina and Antioch University coming together. Antioch has been a pioneer in social justice for over 150 years, and in 2006, the university campus in Los Angeles started the LGBT specialization to train graduate students in the provision of LGBT-competent psychotherapeutic practice. It's one of the few programs in the nation that offers this kind of specific kind of training. So the specialization trains students of all genders and sexual orientations in the provision of culturally competent LGBTQ affirmative theory and practice. Despite improvements in civil rights over the years and a lot more ability to be out and visible in the culture, we obviously see that there's still a lot of oppression directed at LGBT individuals. And as Eden was saying, the psychological impact on that is huge. So to address these challenges on an educational and activist level, and to connect the ideas of LGBT-centered inner work with the affirmative practice and theory, we provide a novel curriculum that is, kind of immerses students in learning how to effectively and ethically provide caring, empathic, therapeutic services to LGBTQ individuals. So thank you again for this honor and this ability or moment to be able to talk about our programs.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just give them a real round of applause. Thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Sadio, I'd like to move to item twenty-seven, if that's okay with you. And we do have some cards, so I think let's go through the cards on that item. I want to start off with Trina Trailer, Robert Hernandez, Brian McNeil, and Carol. Lyles, if you guys would come up, walk up to the center aisle. Yes, identify yourself and begin.
Are we ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Trina Trailer, and I represent the Los Angeles Black Workers' Center. I am here to urge you to vote for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance and Include Strong Enforcement Language. The Civil and Human Rights Ordinance needs a budget that includes community partnerships. Without community partnerships, our community will not be informed that this service is available to them, and it won't be effective. Again, I urge you to vote for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance and Include Strong Enforcement Language. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Ms. Lyles?
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. My name is Carol Lyles, and I'm representing the Los Angeles Black Workers' Center. I'm here to urge you all to vote for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance to Include Strong Enforcement Language. The Civil and Human Rights Ordinance needs a budget that includes community partnerships because there are more jobs available that are needed in the community. Again, I urge you to vote for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance and Include Strong Enforcement Language. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And then before you start, Bahia Karim, Jeremiah Gordon, and Mr. Herman. Yes, sir. Yes. Sir?
Yes, hello. My name is Robert Hernandez, and I was a ramp worker for thirteen years. I went to work one day, and I was discriminated against by upper-level management. They had assumed that I had had a DUI, and I didn't, but yet they let me go, which really impacted me mentally, as far as even thinking about suicide, even thinking, how am I going to be able to support my family? Because you assumed something that was not real. Man, it really shook me real bad. It's like someone telling you that you had cancer, in other words. And what do you do? So I'm really, really, really strongly encouraging and asking you all about the ordinance again, and please place strong language in there where they would know that we're serious. Not only that, but a budget as well. If you can please put a budget that would help us to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Brian McNeil. I'm representing the Los Angeles Black Workers' Center. I'm also here to urge you all to vote for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance, and we ask that you include strong enforcement language. The city should co-enforce the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance with the Bureau of Contract Administration, because the BCA has been in the community doing this type of work, and they're already pretty much staffed, and they have a setup where they can take on this work. Again, we want to urge you all to vote for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance and Include Strong Enforcement Language. And I'm also here to represent injured workers and black workers. There are things that take place on the job site that are not being addressed. People need a place to go. It's extremely important. I could share many horror stories with you, but we don't have time for that. Just realize the importance of this ordinance, and please do everything in your power that you can to pass it and see it through. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Bahia Karim. I'm representing the Black Workers' Center. I want to... We need money to support partnerships to get the word out, to prevent black worker discrimination and promote justice for all black and brown workers. I was working for a year, and I was unfairly terminated because there wasn't an investigation as far as why I was terminated. And I asked if they can go over the tapes to see if I did what I supposedly did, but they didn't. But I just want to urge you all to support this cause for all workers, because we need money to support this cause, and I wanted to... It's important to get the word out for all black workers, and we need strong language. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and Mr. Herman, you're after this gentleman. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
My name is Jeremiah Gordon, and I'm representing the Los Angeles Black Workers' Center. I want to say first that we support the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance, and wanted to thank you for the hard work you've done thus far. I'm also here to urge you to add community service partnerships and public education campaign into the startup budget. Currently, the budget only allocates $600,000 to establish this ordinance and leaves out community partnerships and public education campaign. This ordinance, in order to be effective, needs a public education campaign that educates our community through convening of the community outreach technology and media platforms that outreach and educate the community about the commission on and how Los Angeles can identify discrimination. This public education campaign is needed to educate employers on the ordinance and F.E.H.A. liability. This campaign is also needed to ensure culturally appropriate outreach to workers about the ordinance and state rights. I urge you to add a public education campaign to the startup budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Then after Mr. Herman, if I could get Mindy Garland and Carlos Amador. Yes, Mr. Herman.
I'm here to work. I'm here to work. I'm here to communicate my civil rights, discrimination issues, housing, that's right, my uncircumcised housing, along with other issues of city attorneys' discrimination towards my transgender.
No, come on, Mr. Herman. Just get on the topic, please.
Then let me talk like a queer. You see, the city attorney wishes to assist queers like me in housing.
Okay, you're off topic. Next speaker. Next speaker. Mr. Herman, come on. No, Sergeant, his time has expired. Mr. Herman, please sit down. Please, sit down, and let's have the next speaker. Next speaker. And then after Mr. Carlos Amador, we'll get Lola Smallwood Cuevas. Come on, don't disrupt. Okay, ma'am.
Hi, good morning. My name is Mindy Garland, and I'm representing the Los Angeles Black Workers' Center. I'm here to urge the city to be ready to enforce this ordinance by allowing the Bureau of Contract Administration to assist in enforcing employment discrimination protection. I commend you all for following through with this ordinance and supporting this ordinance. Nevertheless, the key to this ordinance's success is strong enforcement, and we believe that the BCA can provide this strong enforcement because they already have an established infrastructure to tackle employment discrimination. BCA has worked on wage standard enforcement and enforcement around the band-the-box legislation. They have the ability to assist the city with employment discrimination protection. Thank you all for your support, and I have letters of support that I would like to include on the record today. Thank you.
If you could hand them to the sergeant. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Amador with the California Immigrant Policy Center. I'm also a resident of the 12th District. I'm also here to speak in strong support of the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance that is before you today. For the first time in Los Angeles' history, this ordinance will be able to provide local control that will alleviate and address the issues of discrimination in employment. Many community members in our city are facing discrimination in the workplace, and providing this commission and this ordinance will allow for these issues to be addressed and for real equality and justice to be served for all community members, regardless of background as well. So I am here to speak in strong support and also ask for the inclusion of language for strong enforcement on addressing these discrimination issues and cases that come before the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Identify yourself, please.
Good morning, council. My name is Lola Smallwood Cuevas. I'm one of the co-founders of the Los Angeles Black Workers' Center, and I want to just applaud you for your important and historic work today, making sure that workers in our communities are protected in the workplace, in their communities and housing, in the public sphere, against any forms of discrimination that would prevent them from being their full selves in the city. This is particularly important for black workers, and particularly at the Black Workers' Center, where we see that black workers are dealing with the trauma of being the first fired, the last hired, being retaliated against when they stand up for their rights. And because they're low-wage workers, the court is not an option for them. The city is ensuring that we are holding the line on civil rights. And along those lines, it's very important that we include in this ordinance resources so that workers know that their rights can be protected at the city. We can't protect workers if they don't know about it. Public education, public information, a communications program is critical. We did this with the minimum wage ordinance, where we invested $250,000 in that effort, and that needs to happen today.
Your time's expired. Mr. Previn?
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I took interest that you're focusing on civil rights and human rights. So thank you. And I think that the workers absolutely have a point. You know, and I, you know, I'm reluctant to build out a large commission once again, but I feel that you must have support for it, so I'm willing to be supportive of that as a courtesy, sir, to you for letting me remind you that we spend way too much money funding with public dollars, taste of soul. Today, we're adjusting Englanders trying to put a bunch of things on the citywide party list, which I don't think we should allow a guy who's about to leave office to do what he's been doing upstairs.
Let's get on topic, Mr. Previn.
You know, this citywide list. Look at, ask the public. It's on there. It's on there, sir. Don't interrupt, sir. Please, not on civil rights day.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time's expired. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sadio? Gilbert?
Mr. President, first, let me begin by thanking you for your incredible leadership that you've displayed for this council throughout these difficult time periods. I would suggest that you are, in many respects, the light to the darkness that is the Trump era. You know, this weekend, I watched with distress as babies in diapers, without shoes, women were pummeled with tear gas and rubber bullets, and thought, what is it that we can do? There's a sense of helplessness when you see that. We know that it's wrong. We know that that activity is illegal, that those coming from Central America have a legal right to apply for asylum. They don't have a right to asylum, but they have a right to apply. And they have a right to come here and do that. This is recognized in the entire world, in all nations, that refugees have that right. And I watched as they were assaulted and attacked by our country, and felt this great sense of hopelessness and thought, well, what is it that we can do? And what it is that we can do is simply do our work. And this ordinance is our work. This work product is part of your gene, is part of your... I don't know where you get these ideas from, frankly, but it's a way to establish a governance structure, a democratic governance structure, that will ensure diversity and guarantee the protection of human and civil rights. Under this president, every community sitting here has been assaulted and attacked. Immigrants from the beginning, the LGBT community, the Jewish community, the workers, African-Americans, there's no limit to the hate and ignorance that is directed towards communities with a particular purpose to divide us for our political agenda. For us as a city, we have to counter that with this proposal that says we believe in rule of law, we believe in civility, we believe in democracy. And so that is what this ordinance does. It creates a structure for us to move forward. It sets the foundation for us to build upon. We will establish governance. We will have an executive director. We will have administrative law judges. We will have commissioners. We will have an infrastructure that will be set up so that people's human and civil rights are protected here in the city of Los Angeles. We can't speak for the rest of the country, but we can speak for the city of Los Angeles. And in this city, we want African-American workers to be protected. In this city, we want immigrants to know that regardless of their immigration status, that they will be protected. In this city, we will speak up and stand up to hate in every quarter of this city. In this city, Mr. President, we will do all that we can to show the nation that we do believe in the rule of law, in decency, in dignity, and in respect for all. And so I am proud to bring this forward. The ordinance is the foundation and the beginning of a new day for the city, and hopefully shows and sheds a light for this nation about how we can go forward with a modicum of dignity and respect for everybody who lives here. Thank you so much, Mr. President. That's for an eye vote.
Well said, Mr. Sadio. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. If you would please, Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
That is approved. Okay, guys, listen, please. Don't disrupt. We've got more work to do. Mr. Sadio?
More work. We have items three through six forthwith.
Three through six forthwith. So ordered. Okay, let's take some general public comment. Mr. Herman, I'm going to start off with you. You have items one, two, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three through thirty-four, and then thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight, your general public comment. So he gets two minutes, and then he'll go into his general public comment.
As officials keep silent, there is no relief for our society of the Western USA. We found out that the Ottoman Empire was protecting its grounds when the Armenian genocide attacked...
Could we bring this back into the agenda item, please?
I'm here to do my job, sir, to authorize an economic and fair working force for development. When wetbacks come into my country illegally, they take away our jobs. You get a goddamn visa, you get in line with everyone else, and you pay your dues. Then you can say to me, fuck the Armenians. Forty-two U.S.C. 1983. So let me instruct you about... So let me instruct you about my society of the Western Hemisphere, USA. Then, on another point, I'm here to work regarding our New Year's Eve event, and I invite you, and all of you, the public, under my hard-working dollar, to have an event for you, so this way we can participate in necessity and convenience and drink our ass out of this fucking town called L.A. It's the only place in Grand Park where you can get fucked up, just like Jose Weisar's DUI, fucked up. So, again, organizers and sponsors, join me in New Year's Eve Grand Park event to call out the white-nigger politicians to pay for our event. Now that we're all aware of the FBI's investigation, we certainly know... Shut the hell up. I'm speaking. I got the floor.
Mr. Herman, you're directing the rest of the council. You're not directing your comments.
I'm the chair. I got the floor.
No, you do not. You have one minute for general public comment.
So as I was rudely interrupted, as you see, Mr. Weisar has a mask on, I want to remind you, why did his wife decide to change her name only months ago? Four children, and you take that goddamn long to realize that you do not have a real...
So I don't see how this is connected to the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, Madam Chairman.
What did you say?
Mr. Herman, you're done. You've interrupted this meeting. You're not keeping on topic, sir. No, you're done, Mr. Herman. You continue to disrupt. You're not on any type of topic. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Three seconds, two, one.
Next speaker is Dan. Dan, you filled out cards for 31, 32, 33, 36 through 38, and your general public comment.
I'll just go right to my general comment.
Perfect, thank you.
You made a tremendous mistake last week by threatening to have me arrested for talking about the criminal activity of your floor director, Justin Wesson, during my general public comment. I have news for you, Mr. Fabel. Rachelle Weisar was a public figure, announced candidate for office. That is under your purview, Rachelle Weisar and her criminality, and her changing her name after 20 years of having four kids. That is under the city's purview. She was a candidate for that seat. But when you threatened...you had me ejected last week, and you threatened to have me arrested, and you refused to correct it during my general comment, when I wanted to talk about the criminal behavior of another candidate for CD-10 who's been written about in The Times, you bought yourself a lawsuit. I'm going to sue you personally, Mr. Englander and Mr. Wesson, and there is nothing this city's going to want more than for me to have Mr. Wesson under deposition. Watch, you'll see.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Next speaker is Patricia McAllister. Ma'am, you're speaking on item number 26 in your general public comment.
And number 12, madam.
You didn't fill out the card for 12. No, 12 has already...that item has not...
Oh, okay. It's on the board up there. Okay, I'll skip 12 for right now. Let's start off with number 26. Councilmember Rue, he wants to take the beautification program from Hollywood, which has all races of youth. This is for youth. They go up, they go out and clean the communities. He wants to take that contract and put it in Koreatown and give it just to Korean kids. That's racist, and that's discriminatory. All youth should be able to be involved in this program, not just Koreans. And if you drive by Koreatown, you know you only see Koreans in there. So I don't think you should just take it from Hollywood, who employs all young people, all races, black, white, and give it to the Koreans. So let's think about that. Now, I only got one minute here. Do I have public comment also?
Yeah, you can start. You have one minute for general public comment.
Okay. So let's look into that, please, everybody. The Koreans, and plus, a lot of them are not very nice. Okay, now, I want...you know, I work with some very good teachers in the Los Angeles Unified School District, and we have a retirement agency called PARS, P-A-R-S. It's the Public Agency Retirement Services, and I have proof. They're involved in bestling teacher retirement funds. And then they mail teachers out phony yearly contributions report, not listing the millions of dollars they've taken out. So we need to investigate that. I'm going to be talking to you more about that and giving you some proof. It's called PARS, Public Agency Retirement Services. When teachers first start teaching in L.A. USC, they're put into that retirement system until they get into CalSTRS. CalSTRS is the California State Teachers Retirement System. What PARS is doing is ciphering money out of CalSTRS, putting it into PARS. Teachers are losing service credits, and when they retire, they're told, oh, you don't have enough service credits. You lost all your benefits. And I'm going to give you some proof. We need an investigation.
Thank you. Thank you. Ryan Reza-Farsi, you have items one, two, 21, through 40, and then your general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Audible council members, my name is Ryan Reza-Farsi. My lifelong address is 2714 Portland Street. I'm a Beta Theta Pi fraternity brother, just like you. You have that hat over there that says, "Help America Save Again." I'm going to try to do that today in my talks in regards to all these different numbers. Let's put it over here. So first is number 1A. So we're hearing a protest about building a safety department regarding a lien nuisance of amen costs as associated to the municipal code. Again, this is...all this stuff is about liens, it's minimal amounts of money. They have to put it up here in front of you, ladies and gentlemen, because you're the member of the public. But then they go on, and they don't have you a chance to talk about the really important stuff. You see, those stuff just go right by you by Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager and Mrs. City Clerk. You guys are in charge of this stuff, right? So my question is, you see, they continue to issue debt, and then they issue little liens on people. How much debt did you guys issue last year in the form of bonds, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. President, and Mr. Counselor, Mr. and Mrs. Councilmembers? On behalf of the Los Angeles public, how much debt did you put on our backs? You have a $9.9 billion budget, but every time you're issuing...every time I come here, it's another 20 or 30 million-dollar...or $3 million bond. This is what's happening in America, ladies and gentlemen. These people have a runaway train. It's called a checkbook with no bottom...oh, wait, it has a bottomless end.
Get back on topic.
So now I want to talk about my public comment, Mr. City Attorney. This is the end of the line for you, Mr. City Attorney, all the attorneys. This is it. I'm the king of Mr. Attorneys. I created the Esquire position so they can go out there and figure out, how does a king make more money, Mr. Buscaino? I got to make sure you're paying my taxes, Lord Buscaino, in your property of whatever district you're in. What is it? This is the state response from the Governor Brown of Oregon, the broken legal system. No, wait, the broken voting system. I brought it to the city's attention. They told me to bring it to the county. I brought it to the state's attention. The state of California did not respond. You know why? Because Governor Brown knows exactly what's going on. Governor Kate Brown said, hey, Ryan, go and sue, go hire an attorney to sue someone. Oh, wait, I have to sue the government because our electoral process, the voting process is broken. The states do not work closely. This is Tuesday giving. I'm giving you the truth. The city attorney doesn't tell you. The state of Oregon's governor told me the truth. I have to go hire an attorney to sue the government because I got two ballots. That's what's happening in America.
Thank you, sir.
Multiple ballots.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Thank you, Mr. Farsi. We'll see you at the next meeting. Okay, let's move to item seven.
And, Mr. President, item seven, amending motion 7A, has been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Thank you very much. Let's prepare to vote on that item. If you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.
Okay, we can take toe to items one and two as well. So on items one and two, if you would open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.
Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't you walk us through...where are we at now? Because I believe that we've satisfied the public comment on the remainder of the items.
Mr. President, we could go to items 28 through 20D. These are the liens.
Let's do that.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that A be confirmed. For item B, a written motion has been distributed. Item C is for Mr. Bonin's office.
Mr. Previn, please sit down. If there's a...I'll find it. Just please sit down. Mr. Previn, for whatever reason, your name did not come up on the screen, so why don't you take a moment? I will impose what you want to speak on. I'm going to vote on the item. So while I'm dealing with Mr. Bonin, if you would go on and post what...Mr. Previn, please, if you want to speak, just go put your cards in. Mr. Bonin?
Wish I had something more earth-shaking and significant to say. I'd just like to continue C for 90 days.
Okay, we'll continue C.
And that's to February 22, 2019.
All right. So ordered. Yes, Ms. Rodriguez?
20A will confirm the lien.
Okay. Ms. Martinez?
And, Mr. President, the last item, 20D, the recommendation is to confirm the lien.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.
Okay, Mr. Previn, come forward. Okay, I don't know what happened when you put your cards in the first time.
Neither have I, sir.
So I have you at 21.
We'll do an investigation for that.
I have, Mr. Previn, I have you items 21...
I'll call them out, sir. Let's not waste any more time. The people have places to go.
Mr. Previn?
Sure.
I have you items 21.
Helpful, thank you, sir.
Through...Mr. Previn, do you want to speak?
Sure.
Then you should let me tell you what items you're going to speak on. If you don't want to speak, Mr. Previn, you can go and sit down. But you have items, like I said, 21 through 41. So go ahead. You have two minutes, and then your general public comment.
Okay. First of all, I would just like to say that it's no disrespect to L.A. beautification from David Rue by flushing them and replacing them with Korean youth college. That's not a reflection of not liking them. They are lobbyist-funded. They do lots of work around the city. They're going to be just fine. So first of all, I just want to make that clear. Second of all, what I was trying to say earlier when you inappropriately shut me down was that citywide events are funded by a big citywide event lump that people try to stick things in in ways that don't look too much like it's their decision. And yet, when a guy is leaving office, I feel that, like Rue had to deal with LeBange when he left, and, you know, some of the stuff you want to do, some you want to do your own. But Englander is doing everything he can to jam everything he ever thought of right up front. Yesterday, he was up in technology, in budget. There was a joint meeting of budget and public safety where he was ramming through his technical ideas about how to spend the technical money that we're not spending any technical money, where I'm going, what about the TASER refund we deserve for $6, $7 million from that overpaid body-worn camera? It was not the most appealing area, preceded by a delightful little item where we had, believe it or not, hotel gifts were being reevaluated and praised by Englander and trepidatiously questioned by other sane people. And here's the thing, sir. I don't mind that you've moved the liens back to this hall because I think that's in compliance with the law, but when I ask your attorney to just make it clear that it's been a fair and just process, I expect a response, and I think he's going to provide one. I want to say something on behalf of my district, CD-2, because Mr. Krikorian's doing a great job with the excess tax funds, not bond funds, from CRLA. This is amazing. We have over a couple million dollars worth of projects. I wish I was a little more up on them. One is $150,000 for public arts, $120,000 for pedestrian improvement, $995,000 for the Lancashire public. I think we got $1.2 million for a Chandler Bike Way, but I thought that the mayor had like $100 and something million-dollar shortfall on that big one. But we're trying to help out, and I support that.
Thank you. Let's give him his one minute.
Let's give him the general public comment. Thank you, sir. Generally, I just would like to say you're doing a great job, obviously. We do...we would appreciate to be shown the same way that everybody's shown, hashtag Blooming Fields knows, but we're not going to belabor that point because it doesn't make us seem like we're being reasonable. Now, what does make us seem like we're being reasonable is to have a mobile pit stop at Universal. Now, David Rue is going to be a leader here, I hope, because he's going to step forward and join Krikorian, who's already excited, but we talked about it, the neighborhood council. I'm hoping that Kevin James, that Universal, that everybody's going to realize, what a great idea. There's an attendant, he, she, he, she, somebody who knows what they're doing, guards the thing, and it's decent, for God's sakes. Mr. Sadio, you're a civil rights man. They're good. They're good things, so let's do one. Let's do it soon. And finally, I can only say how touched I am by the council members from five, the richest district by 20,017, to be fair. Bonin coming out from CD-11. We're going to try to talk about campaign finance, try to find a solution in Studio City, and, sir, it's because of your leadership. And you're talking during my presentation, but I know you'll listen later, so I want to just thank you for doing a great job. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Rodriguez, we're going to do item nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, item nine is a resolution urging the state legislature to include homelessness as part of the protections for individuals in the hate crime policy. In October, two individuals in my district were doused with battery acid while sleeping, and it had been the third incident in three weeks that they had been attacked in their sleep. Over the weekend, we had another situation where a homeless man in North Hills had been shot and killed. At this time, when we are seeing an unprecedented uptick in hate crimes, we must assure the protections for individuals that not just through their religious practice or who they love, but also their socioeconomic status, that they be protected and that we provide opportunities for us to enforce very vigorously individuals that commit these types of crimes are not...are going to be held to a higher standard so that we can protect the most vulnerable in our communities, and so I ask for your i-vote.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen i's.
Okay, I'm going to take some general public comment. Frederick, Sillick, Jacqueline Richardson, Jesus Maldonado, Alice Berliner. If I called you, come on. If I called your name, please come on down. Yes, sir.
Hi. Could you give me a minute for my phone to...the comments on my phone.
Well, you have something on your phone?
Yeah, I have some.
Why don't you step to the back, get your phone loaded up, and I'll take the next speaker. Identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Jesús Maldonado.
Hello, good morning. My name is Jesús Maldonado.
Vivo en Panorama City.
I live in Panorama City.
Y he ha sido conductor del puerto por alrededor de 18 años.
And I've been a port truck driver for more than 18 years.
Y he estado conduciendo para Calcaras por 10 años.
Been driving for Calcaras for more than 10 years.
Queremos darle gracias al concejal Joe Buscaino.
We want to thank...
Y al consejo de la ciudad por luchar por la gente trabajadora.
We want to thank councilmember Joe Buscaino and the entire city council for fighting for working people.
Hoy mis compañeros de trabajo y yo presentamos cargos contra Calcaras Express.
Today, myself and my coworkers presented charges against Calcaras Express.
Por violar la ley del salario mínimo de Los Ángeles.
For violating the Los Angeles minimum wage law.
Nunca he recibido un solo día de enfermedad mientras se...
Nunca he recibido un solo día de enfermedad mientras he trabajado en Calcaras Express.
I have never received a single sick day while working at Calcaras Express.
Ni para cuidarme a mí mismo o a mi familia.
Neither to take care of my family or any of my other family members.
Peor aún. Si me tomo un día porque yo, un miembro de mi familia, estamos enfermos, los costos del camión de la compañía nos obligan a pagar aunque sea contra la ley.
Even worse, if I take a day off to take care of a sick family member, I'm still obligated to pay for price of the truck that the company's pushing on me.
Okay, tell him he's got to end it. His time's expired.
One last one.
But thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, next speaker. Are you ready now?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, and then Ms. Richardson, after you. Yes, identify yourself and read your statement.
My name is Frederick Sillick. Good morning.
Good morning.
We, the people of the United States, need leadership. We, the people of the United States, need direction from our leaders. The direction we are moving is not suitable is not suitable for life sustainability. We are not, as a species, familiar with life-sustaining components. We are mere reflection of life. Therefore, we are, we must reexamine our life practices and put them in a courtroom atmosphere with public media recording every step and procedure. God himself, God himself, should be summoned to the court. If he don't show, we terminate his 1,000th-century service. We'll be on our own, as we always have been. The violent solution, the violent solution is no longer acceptable. The violence, the violent solution is no longer acceptable to the American people.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson? Diane Garcia? Anita Anau? Yes, Ms. Richardson?
This is in regard to Black History Week in 2019. I'd like to put in a request for little black children in elementary and middle schools that they would be able to observe African tribal dances during that celebration, in addition to Martin Luther King, that they would be able to observe or participate in black tribal dances themselves. I'm sure it would make them very, very happy if that's possible.
Thank you. Okay, did anyone else sign up for public comment? Their name has not been called. Please come forward and identify yourself. Mr. Herman, you already spoke. Identify yourself.
Hi, good morning, council members. My name is Alma Castrejon, and I'm a researcher and policy analyst with the L.A. Alliance for a New Economy. As Jesús Maldonado and his coworkers mentioned today, him and seven Calcaras Express port drivers submitted a minimum wage complaint with the Office of Wage Standards. These claims are for hours worked and for which they have not received any pay. Also, these workers have never received a paid sick day. Per the minimum wage ordinance, they should be receiving at least six paid sick days. They are requesting an investigation of the entire workforce, which is approximately 100 port drivers. In total, in paying the maximum penalties, penalties, the damages amount to over $10 million. This is another violation so the law continues happening in port-of-lay property. Thank you to this council for standing up for workers and a special thank you to council member Buscaino for standing up for port drivers.
Thank you. So did we get Diane? Diane Garcia? Mondo? Anybody else that signed up for public speaking? Okay. So that concludes general public comment. Let's now vote on item 30 as amended.
And, Mr. President, the motion 30A has been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
21 through 26. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Now we'll vote on items 28 and 29. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Vote on items 31 through 34. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Now we can vote on items 36 through 41. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
We could, if we could do, if I remember, forthwith on 40 per Mr. Harris Dawson. Ms. Martinez, you want to take up item 12?
Mr. President, colleagues, I rise to bring a really important issue to your attention. Recently, the Department of Homeland Security released a proposed rule change to redefine how DHS would determine whether an individual is admissible to the U.S. because of his or her likely to become a public charge under federal law. And to be honest, this is not about just a redefinition of a longstanding rule, but it's more of an example of fear tactics from this administration. To me, it's beyond infuriating what I watched over the weekend in terms of what is happening on the border of Tijuana and San Diego, where children and families are being gassed. To me, it's not only -- Mr. Herman, I am, I --
Okay.
This is my time to speak.
Stop for a second.
He's been warned one too many times.
Ms. Martinez, I got this. Sergeants, remove Mr. Herman now. No, Mr. Herman, you were given your time. You were given your time.
And he's been warned probably hundreds of times about shouting out when people are speaking. And he interrupted Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Herman, you were --
And he's continuing to shout. He's been ordered to leave quietly, and he's making noise as he leaves, preventing us from continuing this meeting. And he's still shouting.
No, just, Mr. Herman, just please leave. Please leave.
So he's shouting all the way out, preventing us from doing our work. And he's shouting vitriol as he leaves, all the way out. I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez.
I'm sorry about that, Ms. Martinez, please.
No, this is, it happens quite often with Mr. Herman in terms of his continued disruption at his council meetings. So as I was saying, the events that took place over this weekend are completely unacceptable and not becoming of American. So I want to propose a motion and ask you to support because this rule change would actually change the definition of public charge to include benefits of anyone who's receiving Section 8, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, better known as SNAP, and other types of housing services as well. Any qualifying family who lawfully receives public benefits is in jeopardy of perhaps not being able to qualify to determine their immigration status. It is terrifying. I can think of a mom or families who have to, out of necessity, receive public services. And as a result of that, now their immigration status is now in jeopardy because of this rule change. So, members, we have done nothing more, and I'm very proud of standing with you, than supporting our immigrant community here in Los Angeles and beyond. So I ask you to support this motion today and stand in opposition of this rule change and send a loud and clear message to this administration that Los Angeles is proud to stand with its immigrant community. I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you. Okay, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, motions are posted and referral referred. Announcements, members? Announcements? Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. Health, Education, and Neighborhood Council Committee will be meeting at 2:00 today.
Thank you. And Mr. Krikorian, I have an announcement. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to make it, but the Cleveland Browns have won two games in a row, and I just felt that that ought to be announced today. Are there any other announcements? If no other announcements, if all could please rise for adjourning? Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, Mr. O'Farrell and I jointly would like us to adjourn in memory of Harvey Milk, the LGBT elected official, civil rights leader, member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors, who was killed along with Mayor George Moscone 40 years ago today. Forty years ago today, Los, or San Francisco Board of Supervisors President, Dianne Feinstein, stepped to a microphone in San Francisco City Hall and announced that Mayor Moscone and Supervisor Milk had been killed. And the suspect was county supervisor, city supervisor, Dan White, who had resigned a couple days before and decided he wanted his job back and came to City Hall armed with a gun, an angry white man, and killed the mayor and the supervisor. It was a political earthquake in San Francisco, and it was an emotional earthquake around the country for the emerging LGBT community. It happened just 10 days after the Jonestown massacre, when San Francisco was still reeling from that. And it happened in the wake of a rollback and an aggressive push by the Christian right of LGBT civil rights in the country. Anita Bryant had just led a major charge in Miami in Dade County to repeal an LGBT civil rights bill there. And there were initiatives around the country when Harvey was elected. He'd served for 11 months before he was killed. And he was, you'll see if you hear or see him, he was a charismatic guy, a funny guy, sort of an outsider and a troublemaker. He was a populist. He was an advocate for neighborhoods. He was a huge coalition builder. He built the first real coalition between organized labor and the LGBT community. And he was a real LGBT icon, the second LGBT elected official in the country, first in California and certainly the most celebrated nationwide. His death came just a few weeks after he had helped lead the battle to defeat the Briggs Initiative, which was led by a state legislator here, and it would have prohibited gays and lesbians from being teachers in the state of California. And he went around the state, and he debated Senator Briggs, who was saying that, you know, if you had a gay teacher, you'd have gay kids. And Harvey's retort was that if children mimicked their teachers, we'd have a hell of a lot more nuns running around. The LGBT community won that, and Harvey's leadership was a big part of that. He knew he was going to get killed. When he got elected, he recorded on the tape recorder his last will and testament. And he said he anticipated being killed and that if a bullet entered his brain, may that bullet open and shatter every closet door in the country. But that's not his most famous speech. His most famous speech was his Hope Speech. He gave it in various venues and various occasions, starting with a Gay Pride Parade. He always said that he knew that he meant more to people outside of San Francisco. And he always kept in mind a proverbial kid from Altoona, Pennsylvania, who had called him and was desperate to try to escape a conservative small town. And so he gave this Hope Speech time and time again. And we're going to just do a very short clip of it, and then Mr. O'Farrell will speak.
Some ways in Des Moines or San Antonio, there's a young gay person who all of a sudden realizes that sheer he is gay, knows that if the parents find out, they'll be tossed out of the house, the classmates would taunt the child, and the Anita Bryants and John Briggs are doing their bit on TV. And that child had several options: staying in a closet, suicide. And then one day, that child might open a paper and says homosexual, elected from San Francisco, and there are two new options. Option is to go to California. Stay in San Antonio in flight. Two days after I was elected, I got a phone call. And the voice was quite young. It was from Altoona, Pennsylvania. And the person said, "Thanks. And you've got to elect gay people so that that young child and the thousands upon thousands like that child know that there's hope for a better world, there's hope for a better tomorrow. Without hope, they'll only gaze at those blacks, the Asians, the disabled, the seniors, the uss. The uss, without hope, the uss give up. I know that you cannot live on hope alone, but without it, life is not worth living. And you, and you, and you, you've got to give them hope." Thank you very much.
I was 10 years old when he was killed, struggling with my own awakening awareness of who I was. And I grew up in the Massachusetts version of Altoona, Pennsylvania, a small Catholic community of 10,000 people in Massachusetts. And I remembered Anita Bryant and what she was doing. And I knew when Harvey was elected, and I knew when he was killed. And he gave me hope. Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I remember when he and Mayor Moscone were killed as well. I was a freshman in college, actually. And I'll tell you what that bullet did. It did bust away the closets across the country because when Harvey Milk was killed, what that did was it forced people of conscience across the country to no longer hide behind the shield of, I don't know, some sort of twisted religious justification for discriminating against gay men and lesbians. It really shattered that ability for people of conscience to do that any longer.
And it changed things everywhere, even in my home state of Oklahoma. And, you know, I challenge anyone to grow up gay in Oklahoma in the 1970s because it will do one of two things. It will make you stronger, or it will destroy you. And I am someone who determined at a very young age to survive and make the most of my life regardless. And that's what led me to California. And I don't think you and I would be standing here if it weren't for Harvey Milk. It'd be a very, very different world without his incredible contributions to modern civic life. And he was a revolutionary. I want to read a few of his quotes that were revolutionary at the time. And you, there was this sort of religious, this religious position,